On audio and we can see her on video, so we have all seven members of the Planning Commission in, in the meeting and there is a quorum. So, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mark, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mark. I do have a couple of housekeeping announcements that I'd like to make before we proceed with public comment. Just a few reminders since we haven't been in-person meetings for a while. And then, we are on hybrid meeting with Zoom participants, so there's a few things that I just have to remind people of. First, turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate. That includes the participants on the Zoom call. The microphones, we haven't used them for a while, but they are very sensitive, both when you're speaking and when you're not speaking, so try to speak directly into the microphone. If you do, lean back in your chair or have the microphone pointed up. It does not record the sound very good, and we need to have good sound recordings, as well as allowing the people on Zoom to, to hear what we're saying. When you finish talking, please turn your microphone off if you're waiting for an answer or a long presentation, because there is a lot of feedback if the microphones remain on. As we conduct the meeting, if you can just either raise your hand, or if I'm not looking in your direction, Nick, I'm gonna have a little hard time on you. Just kinda give me the high sign or turn your microphone on and just say, Mr. Chairman, so I can make sure I recognize everybody. Kristy, you as well, if you can either send Colleen a message that you would like to speak, or just jump right in if there's a quick pause. You're on a five-second delay, so it's gonna be a little bit harder for you. So, please, just request it, and if I'm missing somebody, just jump right in. We do have a five-second delay on the participants who are participating via Zoom, so I would ask those people, be particularly attentive to your sound, make sure you're close to the microphone, and then when you, when I recognize you, or when you're making a presentation or answering questions, if you could start by maybe saying, "It's nice to be here, thank you very much," state your name for the record, and then begin with the presentation, because we went, we may not hear you for the first five seconds, those of us who are in the hearing room. And please, at all times, if you could state your name, that helps the clerk when they're transcribing things, if I don't recognize somebody by name. Members of the public, when you're offering public comment, again, if you could just spell your name as well, and we'll make sure the record reflects that. I also want to recognize that we have Cynthia Gregory from the District Attorney's Office, and she is filling in for Sam Taylor, who has another meeting, so she will be giving us legal and procedural advice as we need it, so feel free to call on Cynthia, who's down at the end, and we'll get anything taken care of there. I did notice on the packets, there were some page numbers that were a little bit small, and the pages at the end were not numbered in the large numbering that we have for the packet pages for 176 through 181, so I just wanted to call that to everybody's attention. And then, lastly, I would like to announce that the master plan has been printed, so we do have copies that are available for purchase. The black and white copy, I'm told, is $3.73. The color copy is $18.14, and those would be available through the county. You can email planning@DouglasNV.us. People are working outside of their office, so email is usually the best way to communicate with staff members. And I do want to thank all the members of the Planning Commission and all the staff for their very hard work in putting this document together. I think it's an important document, and we did some very good work on that, that plan. So, having said that, I'd be happy to entertain questions on any of the points that I made. If not, we'll move toward public comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Nick Meyer.
Yes, Nick.
I have a longstanding doctor's appointment this afternoon, so I'm gonna need to leave at 2:45. So hopefully, we'll get through all the items, but I may miss one or more items.
Thank you very much, Nick. Then we'll start with public comment. This time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual agenda items at the direction of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on items one, two, and three when they are discussed by the Planning Commission. And if you would, reserve your comment on those items until the time that they are considered. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control. We do have the timing lights that we are going to be using again. You will start with a green light. When you've got 30 seconds left, the light will go yellow, and then, when your three minutes has expired, the red light will come on. We do not have sign-in pads, so please, people making public comment, would just state your name and spell your name before your public comment. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any public comment is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice, the message will be stopped at that point. So we'll now have opening public comment. If any members of the public who are either on the Zoom call or here in person would like to make opening public comment, the floor is, is open. Colleen, do you have any individuals who are participating in Zoom that indicated they'd like to make opening public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. No, I don't have anybody asking for, to make public comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. As, as I've stated in the past, public comment is also available to be made by written means to the planning@DouglasNV.us email, and that would be accepted during the day of the meeting, to be inserted in the record following the meeting. So, if there are no public comment to be made at this point, we'll move to approval of the agenda. This is for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda. The Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items for the agenda, or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Do members have questions or comments on the agenda? If not, we'll move to public comment on the agenda, and then a motion. Seeing no questions or comments from the Planning Commission members, I would open the approval of the agenda for public comment. Colleen, any individuals seeking to make public comment on approval of the agenda?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. No public comment at this time.
Okay. Is there any public comment from participants in the room? Seeing none, then I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Bryce?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mark seconds the motion that Bryce has made to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed to the agenda being approved, say nay. Then there's seven ayes and no nays.
No, aye, nay.
I'm sorry. Could you, could you state your name?
Stephen Vigor.
I think, Colleen, we've-
Chairman Walder, I'm sorry, he's a member of the public, but he's supposed to be commenting for item one.
Okay. We'll, we'll listen to his comments when they get to item one. Thank you, Colleen. So, and that was seven votes in favor, no votes against the approval of the agenda. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes. This is for possible action, approval of the draft minutes, Planning Commission meeting, March 9th, 2001, 1:00 p.m. Do individuals have comments or corrections on the minutes? I submitted several small ones to the clerk's office, but they don't affect the material content of the votes or the, the meeting. Other members have comments on the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I submitted a few small corrections, which the clerk made, and if no one else has corrections or comments, I will move adoption of the minutes as corrected.
Before we get to the motion, I'll ask for public comment on approval of the minutes. The reason I do that is because in certain instances, there may be members of the public who commented at the previous meeting, and if their comments were, were mistakenly transcribed by the clerk, I want to offer the public always the opportunity to correct their comments that they made at previous meetings. So, I'll open to public comment, either on Zoom, Colleen, or in the room, for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Right now, nobody has reached out to make comments on the minutes.
Thank you very much, Colleen. All right. Maureen, your motion, I think, is still valid, to approve the minutes with corrections. The clerk's office likes to always note that the minutes will be, need to be corrected, so that gives them a little box to check when they go back and correct the things that we've submitted. So if there's no other comments on approval of the minutes, can we have a second to Maureen's motion?
I'll second that.
Mark seconds Maureen's motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. This is on approval of the minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed to approval of the minutes? Hearing no nays, then the vote is seven to zero, approval, and the minutes are approved. We will now move to item one on the agenda, and I will read this into the record. And we'll follow the standard procedure that we did when we were having live meetings or in the Zoom meetings. I'll read it into the record. We'll have the staff presentation. We'll have any presentation by the applicant. Then we'll come back to the Planning Commission for questions of the staff or the applicant. Then we'll move to public comment, and then we'll conclude with discussion, deliberation, and a motion. So, this is agenda item one for possible action. Discussion on land division application DP 21-0044 for a division of land into large parcels to divide 204.31 acres into five parcels, ranging in size from 39.87 acres to 42.22 acres. The subject parcel is located along East Valley Road and DJ Lane in the RA5 Rural Agriculture Five-Acre Minimum Size Parcel Size zoning District in the East Valley Community Plan, APN 1320-14-002-018. The applicant is Jeffrey Jarboe, CFO Bentley Family Limited Partnership. And Lucille, you will be making a presentation for the staff, and then we'll turn it over to Keith Rubin or the participants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. We'll start with the vicinity map. The blue highlighted parcel here is the, is the parcel we're talking about. It's 1.1 miles north of, south of Fremont Street and East Valley Road, and 1.7 miles north of the intersection of Buckeye and, and East Valley Road. The applicant is proposing to subdivide 204.31 acres into five parcels, utilizing Douglas County Code Chapter 2716, Division of Land Into Large Parcels. This provision of code allows parcels of 40 acres or larger, or one sixteenth of a section, to be subdivided. The parcel is Zoned RA5, and the land use is rural residential. Although the applicant is only subdividing into larger parcels, it is possible to further subdivide the 40-acre parcels into five-acre parcels, utilizing either the tentative map process or the subdivision map process. The tentative map process allows an applicant to subdivide four or fewer parcels, and a subdivision map is five or more parcels. A division of land into large parcels must meet Nevada Revised Statutes Chapter 278, Sections 471 through 475, and Douglas County Code Title 20, Chapter 716. The tentative map is required to be reviewed, reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission, and after conditions have been met and the final map application has been received, it is to be reviewed and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Conditions associated with a division of land into large parcels are less restrictive than the tentative map for, for fewer parcels or the subdivision map process. The slide that you see now shows some examples of the conditions of approval associated with this map. Adequate access, irrigation and drainage, easements for roads and public utilities, although extending public utilities is not required with a division of land into large parcels. It is with the smaller maps, the subdivision maps and tentative maps. And taxes are to be paid with the final map. They're also required to be paid for this application as well, in full, for the fiscal year. Here's the tentative map. There's also a primary flood zone, the AO1, on Parcels 2 and 3. County Code Chapter 2050 does not allow parcels less than 19 acres to be subdivided in a primary flood zone, so any further subdividing will have to mitigate the flood zone or capture the flood zone on one 19-acre parcel. Staff believes the findings have been met for approval of the tentative parcel map. Conditions 1 through 9 are on packet pages 62 to 63. Staff did have a conversation with the applicant, and there have been some changes to the conditions. Some of the conditions, we can start with condition one. They've asked that we remove the requirement to remove the airport hangar. This used to be an old landing strip, and there is a hangar there, so we conditioned it to be removed, but, and the reason is that in the RA5, you cannot have an airport there. So, they're asking us to allow the hangar to remain as possible or potential storage or something for whoever may buy the parcel, and as long as they're not going to use it as a hangar. So, staff is agreeing to leave the, to remove that condition. Also, they want to ask to revise condition 8, to remove 8E, 8F, 8G, and add the followings to condition 9. So, 9M would be per USGS 7.5 Minute Quadrangle Map. There is an earthquake fault crossing Parcels 2, 3, and 5. 9N would be per USGS 75 Minute Quadrangle, Quadrangle Map. There is a blue line stream drainage course crossing Parcels 2, 3, and 4, and aligns with the flood zone AO1, as it's shown on the map, and revise condition 9C to state the Community Development Certificate State, shall state that Douglas County rejects the offer of dedication at this time, and reserves the right to accept dedication at a future date. Staff is recommending approval, and the motion would be approval and division application DP 210044, a request to subdivide a 204.31-acre parcel into five parcels, the smallest being 39.87 acres and the largest 42.22 acres in size for Jeffrey Jarboe, CFO Bentley Family Limited Partnership, based on the recommended conditions as amended, conclusions and findings in the staff report. Questions?
Thank you very much, Lucille. Let's hold the questions until we've had the applicant have a chance, and then people can ask questions of either the staff or the applicant. Keith Rubin, are you making a presentation on behalf of the Bentley Family Limited Partnership? If you are, please go ahead. If you need to share your screen, you can start that process, or Colleen can assist you there. So you can proceed, Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Keith Rubin with Aral Anderson Engineering, and I have with me from Bentley Family Limited Partnership, Matt McKinney, who is also online. Mr. Chairman, with the changes to the conditions of approval that staff has outlined, we are in agreement with all the recommended conditions, and are just really ready to answer any questions. The land division maps are fairly, I hate to say straightforward, nothing straightforward, but it's the, the one of the last levels of approvals you can get under state law that's permitted for 40-acre parcels. The only one that's even less permissive than this is if there are 640-acre parcels, which would require no hearings at all. We'll just be recording a map, I believe, under NRS. So this is a, just creating these 40-acre plots, and we're in agreement with these conditions, and we're ready to answer any other related questions.
Thank you very much, Keith. We'll bring it back to the Planning Commission members for either questions of staff or the applicant. Please either raise your hand or state your name. Nick, would you like to go ahead?
I have a couple of questions. The exemptions that were shown on the slide, just a couple slides previously, are they in our package?
Are you talking about the revised-
The revised conditions, yes.
Yes. So, the changes are not in your staff report. The original conditions are in your staff report. The revised conditions will be part of the packet that we bring to the Board of County Commissioners when the final map-
Okay, so why, why were these not included in the package?
There was a discussion after, so the applicant receives the staff report about the same time that the Planning Commission receives the staff report, and then they revised it. I mean, they, they read the conditions, and then they contacted staff to say that they weren't in agreement with the conditions, and asked if they could be revised. Staff went, just had a discussion with the applicant, and is proposing these new revised conditions.
Okay, I would like, I would like Planning to take us through these revised conditions so that we understand what's going on here.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, lady?
Can I have Planning take us through these revised conditions so we know what's going on here?
Sure. So, the conditions that you see up here were revised through our engineering department, and we have Jeremy Hutchings on the Zoom, so if Jeremy wants to take us through the reason for the changes, and if you can explain those to Nick as well. Jeremy?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Jeremy Hutchings with Engineering. Hopefully, the, I'm past the delay. Lucille, if you can bring up the, that-
The conditions, or you want the map? Oh, the map, sorry. Here we go.
Two. So, one of the conditions was to put on a deed restriction to the building area for the blue line stream, which the applicant pointed out is not really required for the division of land into large parcels, and so we changed that to a note, just to alert future homeowners that that is on the, a few of the parcels, and that applicant was agreeable to it. Then, the other condition about the earthquake faults was similar to that. There are earthquake faults that are mapped with our GIS on, on the project, but those locations, actual locations of those earthquake faults are often incorrect from the mapping, so we changed it to a note rather than showing it on the map, so they can, so if you were to purchase one of these parcels, you'd be alerted to the fact that there were mapping on, on the map, or on the, on the central project. I think, can you flip back to the revisions again, Lucille, just to make sure those, I think that was M and N?
Yes. So, M and N, and then 9C.
Yeah, 9C is just a standard condition that the county rejects, offers a dedication that I think just was not originally put on the conditions in the packet.
And then maybe, can you address why removal of the 8E, F, and G, in case that was in question as well?
Yeah, the other two of those were changing it from a requirement to show it as a deed restriction, or the map locations on the map, to just being a note on the map, alerting the applicant that, or a potential buyer that the conditions are, or that the fault and the blue line streams are on some of the parcels.
So, I'm not clear, if, if this is code, and there's supposed to be a deed restriction, why are we just changing it to a note? why are we just changing it to a note?
It's not code for large parcels. When you're dividing the land into large parcels, as the applicant pointed out, that's a lower level of approval than, say, a parcel map or a subdivision map where you're required to map it at a more detailed level. I think it stems back from the, maybe the applicant or somebody else with more history in Nevada can correct me if I'm wrong, but it stems back from when they're dividing up the state, you know, in the, a long time ago, when they didn't want to go out and do a lot of extensive surveying in some rural areas. So it's not required by the code to put the deed restriction on for large, re-dividing the parcels.
Okay, so these-
Large parcels.
These changes were pointed out by the applicant in saying that these are not requirements required for a large parcel subdivision.
Correct. You don't need to put those restrictions on the map for large parcel subdivisions as you would on a typical tentative or subdivision map that you otherwise would have to provide a higher level of surveying for.
Okay, so are you saying that-
But the notes will are on the map, the notes will still be placed on the map, so if you were to go in and buy one of these larger parcels, you'd be alerted to the fact that there are mapped blue line streams and earthquake faults on the project area.
Okay, and would there then be a deed restriction on these five-acre parcels that this is subdivided into?
In the future, if it was subdivided into the five-acre parcels, either through the subdivision or the parcel map process, at that point, we could consider that condition of putting the deed restriction on it and locating the earthquake faults.
Okay, thank you.
That would, the future, that would be in the future.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Other members of the Planning Commission have questions for staff or the applicant? Maureen, and then Bryce.
Lucille, since this was an old airport, has anything been done about checking for contamination on the property?
We had, we did not require that. I don't believe that would be a requirement at this stage. As far as I know, no. The answer would be no. I don't know that it would be required. Maybe Jeremy might know if any type of study would need to be done as far as contamination. I'm assuming she's talking about fuel? Any kind of spillage that might have occurred with fuel?
Lucille, I can try to take stab at that again, when the five-second delay is a little bit difficult, but no, that, to my knowledge, is not required for the division of land into the large parcels, so no study's been done unless the applicant has some specific knowledge, but it's not required at the county to do that.
So this is similar to Nick's questions, that when it subdivides, when it goes into smaller parcels, then we address the contamination issues, if things have been buried on the property that we're not aware of in previous life, those types of things, that's when this gets more detailed.
Potentially, I don't, I'm not aware of any requirements to do a Phase 1, if that's where you're looking to environmental study. Oftentimes, that'd be by the potential purchaser and subdivider, but I don't think there's any specific requirements for a Phase 1 analysis in our code for, say, a parcel map in the future.
Well, I'd like my concerns noted on the record for a later date, if this, when this comes to be subdivided.
Thank you, Maureen. Bryce, did you want to ask a question or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the lines of what Nick was saying, I just think anytime, even if it's supplemental information, if we can try to get that out to us and to the public as soon as possible, I just think it helps with transparency, gives us an opportunity to read it, maybe develop some questions. So I know it was last minute, I don't know what the timing was, but when possible, I think it's good to get that information out.
Thank you, Bryce. That's a very good point. We do want to make the public aware of any changes as they arise, and the Planning Commissioners would always appreciate an extra opportunity to digest the changes. In this case, Lucille, if you want to put them back up again, just to refresh everybody's memory, the conditions start on page 62 of the packet. There's seven initially, and those don't change. And then we go to number eight. Am I correct, Lucille, on the next page?
So yes.
Number eight, we've removed C, F, and G, and then we've moved basically the same concept that was in those that we've removed. We've added a M and an N to number nine. So basically, we're just taking things off the map and putting them into the notes, is what those, that's my summation of that. And then we have revised Condition C, as Lucille has on the board there. So that's just my basic summation, and I do think your point is very, very well taken, Bryce. We like to have as much as we can ahead of time for everybody. But this will go then to the Board of County Commissioners for their review at the appropriate timeframe. Is that correct, Lucille?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct, and the revised conditions will be part of that staff report.
Thank you very much. Other members of the Planning Commission that have questions on this agenda item?
I have a couple more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Nick, please go ahead.
Does the county have any record of a functional airport on this property?
I'm not aware of that. I know there's public knowledge. I know Tom Delara mentioned to me that it had been an airstrip. You can see on an aerial that there is some kind of a, like, worn-out area from the aerial. I don't know. We could do further research on that.
I think that would be appropriate, to know if there was fuel stored on this property. The second thing is, if these properties are divided, they'll still be under the RA5 designation, correct?
That is correct.
And what would an applicant have to do if they bought one of these properties in order to change the zoning of that to increase the density?
They would need a master plan and a zone change.
They would need a master plan amendment?
It would depend on the type of zoning they would want, but anything smaller than RA5 would, the next size down would be SFR2, SFR1, so that would be a master plan and a zone change.
Okay, thank you. I think that's, that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Nick. Yeah, if there's no other members of the Planning Commission that have questions of the applicant or the staff at this point, then we'll move to public comment, and then we'll come back for a motion and deliberations on a motion. Colleen, do you have anything on the Zoom call? I think you said one person had jumped in prematurely who wanted to make a comment on this. If they're available, they could, again, state their name, and then we can go ahead, and you can time them on the three-minute comment there. Is that, is that okay, Colleen?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Walder. I just want to make sure Tom popped in. I didn't know if Tom wanted to make a comment. They were speaking earlier.
Steven Figueroa.
All right, Steven Figueroa.
Steven, hold on a second.
Okay.
We're not to you yet, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
All right, thank you, Colleen. I was aware of the airstrip back in high school. It was, I don't recall that it was even paved, I think it was just a dirt airfield, and I don't, it was just an area out there in the pine nuts, you know, when I was driving around out there that we came across. I don't know if any airplanes have actually landed on it, I was just aware that there was a field out there. Is that, I'm sorry, I was talking with Sam Taylor earlier about other issues and missed the first part of the meeting. My apologies.
Thank you, Tom. Colleen, you can go ahead and then let the individual or individuals who have public comment that are on the Zoom call, again, state their name, and then they can make their comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Go ahead. Do you have three minutes?
Hi there. I was inquiring regarding the DJ lane. I have a property at 1767 DJ, and where's this partial, is it going up the driveway? How's this working out? I don't have a map.
How would that affect?
How would that affect our driveway for 1767 DJ lane?
Okay, go ahead. This is strictly commenting, and then they'll answer your questions afterwards, so get whatever you can out there, whatever questions you have.
Yeah, I just wanted, I was just concerned about the easement and the driveway, and what interferes, and what's going on with that. I guess I just have to hold on and find out, but that's, I just want to know if our property will be affected.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Colleen, any other public comment on Zoom?
We have Jim Slade, he would like to make a comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, Jim Slade, S as in Sierra, L-A-D-E. I don't quite understand the delay here, there's an even larger delay between Zoom and YouTube. But I do agree with the comments made by Member Clutz and others, that as much up-to-date, accurate info as possible, including changes to conditions, should be commissioners and to the public before the meeting. You know, this has happened way too many times, I don't see any excuse for it. To me, items that aren't up-to-date should be continued into a following meeting. On this particular issue, you know, I don't have any particular problem with the division of land into large parcels. I understand that there's a pretty low bar for that, that it's almost pro forma. Despite that, I'm very disappointed in those pathetic little maps on page 59. They're the only maps that are included in the staff presentation. They're far too small to be readable, much smaller than maps we've ever seen before on any other application. The zoning map and the land use maps are completely inadequate, even though this is just a division of land in large parcels, that should have a key there to show the color coding, what it all means, should indicate the zoning and the land use of adjacent properties as well. I don't think that's asking too much, I think that's something that the commissioners would want to know as well as the public. And those should always be addressed and fulfilled in maps that are of sufficient size to be readable by commissioners and by the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Colleen, anything else on the Zoom participants for public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Now, those would be the only two at this time.
Thank you very much.
I just have one more comment, Figueroa, again, sorry.
Sir, you've had your one opportunity. If your, is your wife or someone else there that would like to add additional comment, or do you have it?
Yes, hi, this is Yvette Figueroa, and I do have a question, since we are on the DJ. Will there be special requirements for utilities? And also, of course, we have a DJ, and wondering about the driveway as far as pavement, will that affect access? I just wanted to know a few things about that, especially pertaining to the DJ side.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anybody else, Colleen, on the Zoom call that has indicated they want to make public comment on this issue?
No, Mr. Chairman, it looks like that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move back to the people who are in the meeting room. Any public comment from individuals in the meeting room? Seeing none, then Lucille, would you like to start with answering the questions, particularly the one regarding the 1767 DJ? I believe that's the southerly border of the land. And then Keith, if you or Matt have comments that you wanted to add to what Lucille has, or Lucille, if you want to defer to Jeremy on any of these, please go ahead and try and address the things that were raised in public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Lucille Rayo. So the question about driveways, this application is just for a division of land into large parcels, they are not proposing any development at this time, so driveways would not be built. They're not required to pave roads with this map, and they are not required to put utilities in as well. So when and if, down the road, some other map comes along, the neighbors would be noticed, and they would have an opportunity to speak and hear what's going on with regards to further subdivision at that time than paving and utilities would be required. Driveways do not typically come in until there's development for housing.
Thank you, Lucille. Keith, do you or Matt have comments that you'd like to respond to on the public comment at this point?
Mr. Chairman, no. I think Lucille summed it up quite nicely, there's no development proposed currently. If someone went in to purchase one of these future 40-acre lots and build their house in the middle, they would have to come in with a building permit and show their access with those building plans, or if it was going to be further subdivided, then that map would be, go through a similar process that this one is, and neighbors would all be noticed, and those plans would come toward them if there were going to be utility extensions and road improvements, which I think is basically what Lucille just said.
Thank you very much, Keith. And if I can just respond also, I do think on the issue of the surrounding zoning, Lucille, you do have on packet page 59 the zoning maps, but you also have the description there. So the surrounding zoning is all RA5, and that's that middle map, the light green, and the star is, the star representing the property. And then you can also get a closer view on the maps on page 65, and that does show DJ Lane at the southerly border of the property that we're considering. I don't have other questions at this point, or amplifications on the public comment, so we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for further questions, and then we can move to the motion. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any further questions, I was going to make a motion.
Are there other questions that people have? We can ask questions during discussion as well on the approval of the motion. Seeing none, then Bryce, go ahead and make the motion, and we would want you to include in the motion the revised conditions. You don't need to cite all of the specific modifications that were made, but if you just recognize that we have revised the conditions that were proposed in the staff report. But go ahead, please make the motion, and then we'll consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having reviewed this, I support staff's findings. I don't take any exception to the changes. I do understand Member Meyer and Vice Chairwoman Casey's concerns. However, I don't think it's under our purview to deal with Phase 1 studies, and so for that, I'll make a motion to approve the land division application, DP 21-0044, a request to subdivide 204.31-acre parcel into five parcels, the smallest being 39.87 acres and the largest 42.22 acres in size for Jeffrey Jarboe, CFO Bentley Family LTD Partnership, based upon the recommended conditions as amended, conclusions and findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Bryce. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Mark seconds Bryce's motion to approve the land division application. Is there discussion? I would only comment that I think members of the Planning Commission have made very good questions on this issue. I do think the staff would be well advised as they prepare this for the Board of County Commissioners to look into some of the issues a little bit further about the usage of the land. While we're not to that point now, we always want to err on the side of caution, so I think those are good points that people have made. So I would be supportive of this, and I think it's appropriately devised by the staff. So other comments, members of the Planning Commission, on the motion that Bryce has made? Seeing no other comments, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion will vote aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And Kristi, just to confirm, you're voting aye on this one? We do have that delay, just to make sure.
Yes, Kristy Candle confirming for the record on voting aye.
Thank you very much, Kristi. So on this, there are seven votes aye, no votes nay, and the motion is agreed to. We'll now move to Agenda Item 2. This starts on packet page 70, and I will read this into the record for possible action. Discussion on Land Division Application DP 20-0322, a tentative subdivision map to create 35 industrial parcels ranging in size from 1.07 acres to 6.2 acres. The project site is located on 78.7 acres at the northwest corner of Hayburn Road and Airport Road in the LI, Light Industrial, and A19 Agriculture 19-acre Minimum Zoning Districts and the Airport Community Plan area. The applicant is Bentley Family LTD Partnership, APNs 1320-07-02-005, Lorenzo, you can start with the presentation, and then we'll move to the applicant on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Lorenzo Mastino with Douglas County Planning for the Record. I'll start with a little bit of background on this project. The site is located on a 79-acre site located at the northwest corner of Hayburn Road and Airport Road within the Airport Community Plan. The project design is for a 35-lot industrially-zoned subdivision that is proposing lots ranging in size from 1.07 acres to 6.2 acres. Although the land to be subdivided is entirely contained within two contiguous industrial zone parcels of approximately 39 acres each, the project also includes off-site improvements accommodated on three additional abutting properties, zoned agriculture 19-acre minimum, as shown on the off-site dedication, which is your attachment number four. These off-site improvements include two proposed access roads and a detention basin. Please note that on 4521, the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee recommended approval of this project, subject to conditions as listed in the evaluation portion of the staff report that was updated after that meeting, and that's packet page 75 and 76. Here you can see a vicinity map of the site. What the red dashed line shows is actually where the lots are going to be located, the 35 lots that are proposed, and you're going to be able to see that better in a later layout map. But I just want to point out here how although the APNs that are listed and were used for the notification of this project also include the A19 parcels that surround this light industrial parcel, the project is actually contained on the site that you see in dash red. And those little square-looking extensions that are located at the southwest and northwest corners of the large rectangle are where access is provided from and also where the detention basin is going to be located. This is a zoomed-in site layout map, again in your package. Here you can see how there's quite a bit of variety in lot sizes that this subdivision is going to be providing. Again, ranging from 1.07 to about six acres and in-between sizes. The dashed areas that you can see on this map, they show the access, which is going to be provided by Milky Way Road, which is going to be coming off Hayburn, and also from Earnhardt Road, which is going to be coming off Airport on the bottom-left corner. Those two are going to be dedicated to the county. In terms of phasing, the applicant is proposing three phases for this subdivision. The Phase 1 final map will be recorded within the four years as required by county code. And then Phase 2 and 3 final maps will be recorded in two-year successions after that. And findings for the tentative subdivision map, here we go by Code Section 20.708.030. And the following are things that are offered for consideration to the Planning Commission. There are eight findings for this type of application, and they're described in detail at packet pages 76 and 77. Three ones that I wanted to bring up because this project actually does have to do specifically with these, and it's clear from the material that we have reviewed, is that use and density comply with the requirements of our code. They conform to the improvement standards in terms of road access, for example. They're providing the section that code requires in this type of project, and the phasing plan is deemed acceptable. Therefore, staff believes that the findings have met, and the project has been conditioned. See conditions for all the phases on the packet pages 77 through 83 for the final map submittal that will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. Please note that on this item, we did have one revised condition after discussion with the applicant. In this case, the revised condition is A3F, which is on packet page 80. And in this case, it's merely a condition revision that has to do with language cleanliness. It does not really change the condition itself, staff believes. The new condition would read, "The proposed lift station design will require review and approval by Douglas County Utilities. The applicant shall provide an easement or dedicate land to Douglas County at the location of the proposed lift station." This is the recommended motion in front of you, but I would now open it up for questions or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lorenzo. Let's go to the applicant. Keith, if you're presenting on this and have any additional people with you, please go ahead and make any comments at this point, then we'll come back for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Planning Commission members, for the record. Keith Rubin with R.O. Anderson Engineering. I do have something I did want to discuss regarding the location of Earnhardt Road. Try to explain that. If I could, I can share my screen.
Go ahead, Colleen. Do you need to make assistance there? Okay, that looks good. We can see that, Keith.
Great, thank you. So Bentley Family owns adjacent property to the west and the properties to the north, basically everything that surrounds this proposed industrial subdivision. There is a strip of property that basically is to the limits of an irrigation ditch. It starts from this property line, if you can see my hand right there, all the way across to here. This is owned by an individual, I believe she's out of state. And Matt McKinney with Bentley, who's also on the line with me, has been in contact with them to try to obtain either an easement or a purchase of this property through here. And they have not been able to come to terms. This extension of Earnhardt is the only reason we're coming over here by the way of lining it up with meridians because we can't cross that property without the benefit of either an easement or their concurrence, or them actually selling that little strip of land. So there have been back and forth. But at this time, because we don't have a resolution to that, we would continue to provide access on Earnhardt Road that comes in this direction. Also, I want to point out that Milky Way Road, there is an existing easement that comes through here. It's slightly offset, but you can see it comes through and comes to here. So this isn't really a new road, but it is being located to line up with the access driveway across the street for the county corporate yard. That's why we've actually had to move that to make sure the access is aligned. Those are the two things I wanted to specifically point out to the commission. And if you have any questions about either myself or Matt, we'll be happy to respond. Otherwise, we're in agreement with all the staff. Conditions is recommended.
Thank you very much, Keith. We'll come back to members of the Planning Commission now for questions for the applicant or questions for staff. Nick, would you like to go ahead, Nick?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Number one, this lift station approval, can you explain exactly what that is? The exemption that's requested, or the change that's requested?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning for the Record. I would defer to County Engineer Jeremy Hutchings for the description of the lift station. But as far as I understood it, it's not an exemption. It's a modification of the condition.
Thanks, Lorenzo, for the record. Jeremy Hutchings with Douglas County Engineering. Comment, you ran a five-second delay again. Yeah, thanks, Planning Commissioner, for that question. The change in the condition is really just semantics. The original condition had some language at the end of it, "if approved", implying that a lift station may not be allowed. So the language is rewritten basically to get that out. Lift stations are allowed with approval of the design from the Public Works Department. It's just semantics as far as it goes. There still will be a lift station. It'll still be required to be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department.
Can you explain to me what a lift station is?
Yeah, you bet. So the lift station is simply a pump station. So the effluent can't flow out by gravity to the treatment plant because of the difference in grade of the topography. So there's a low spot where the sewer drains down to, and then it gets pumped up to an existing gravity main that takes the effluent to sewer plant. So we're just using it to pump the sewage uphill, basically.
And is the lift station located in the, what is it, the northeast corner of the property?
Yeah, let me see if I can, I don't know if they have the utility plant up there. I think it's called out. Yeah, it's to the northwest corner, actually.
Northwest corner, okay.
Commissioner, the northwest corner. And that is shown on the conceptual utility plant.
Okay, so that leads to my next question. Do we know the capacity of the North Valley Sewer? Because I am assuming that this effluent is going to be pumped all the way to the North Valley Sewer Plant. Is that correct?
It won't be pumped the whole way. It'll just be pumped up to a point where we have existing gravity. We do, I believe, Lorenzo, we do have, maybe Keith can speak this as well, but I believe we do have a will-serv letter from Public Works indicating the capacity is available at the plant.
Is, do we actually?
We had to provide that with the application that the district had to verify the first capacity. And then that also gets to the point of paying for some of those capacity fees with each final map.
So we have a will-serv letter?
Correct.
And you mentioned that there are certain fees that are required for the property in order to pump sewage to the North Valley?
So that's a good question. I believe the Public Works Department has signed one EDU to each proposed parcel because we don't, to be fair to the applicant, we don't know what the effluent rate is going to be with the commercial maps. It's hard to estimate, so when they come in with an actual use on each lot, that'll be reassessed. But I believe that Public Works is assessing one EDU for capacity.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, it does.
It is a little bit.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next question I have is regarding, it says in Phase 1, Item D, page 78, "The applicant shall obtain an encroachment permit from the Nevada Department of Transportation DOT for a proposed 450-foot dedicated left-turn lane to the project access onto Airport Road." Does that mean that the road is going to be widened in order to add a left-turn access lane?
Yeah, I believe that might be a little bit of widening, but left-turn lanes are a little bit tricky. So it'll probably be equally widened a little bit on each side with some tapers. We haven't seen a final design with that that would come, you know, at the DOT road. So they'll be working with DOT to get that design reviewed and improved. And we'll just be putting that as a condition on that map. But typically, when that design happens, it widens a little bit on each side to make room for the left-turn lane.
Because you know you do have that piece, that strip of property there that's going to limit the amount of widening that's going to be available on one side, right?
That's correct, but there's also, right-of-way appears that there's enough right-of-way to allow that widening to occur, that exists.
If I could jump in, Nick, on packet page 86, this is the R.O. Anderson, page 2 of their presentation. It does say in the second paragraph, after it talks about the dedicated left-turn lane, "The owner has voluntarily proposed wider travel lanes and right-of-way than the county's typical street section would otherwise require, increasing the pave width from 32 feet to 48 feet to better accommodate the size and turning radius of semi-trucks and trailers typically associated with industrial traffic."
Okay, so they voluntarily proposed wider travel lanes, but this road is under the auspices of NDOT. So they can propose all they want, but the question is, is can it, can the road be widened?
Sorry, this is Keith Rubin. The sports sections that we are proposing to make wider are the internal roads, so Earnhardt itself, Milky Way Road, and all the loops internally. Those are wider than the standard minimum pave width of 32 feet, or going to 48 because we've heard complaints from users that our road seems also too narrow to accommodate some of the trucks. So internally, we propose that, but you are correct, Mr. Meyer, is that we would have to go to the NDOT? NDOT, but it have to permit encroachment and any improvements within Airport Road, because that is their right-of-way.
So is that going to be a condition of the approval of this? Will that be a condition that you are successfully able to negotiate with NDOT to get your left-turn lane in there and?
Yeah, if I can jump in again, Nick, it's on packet page 78, Phase 1, Condition D. "The applicant shall obtain an encroachment permit from the Nevada Department of Transportation for proposed 450-foot dedicated left-turn lane."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. One more question. And page 78, Item K, "The applicant shall provide a means of water quality treatment for stormwater before it discharges into the irrigation ditch." Can you explain to me what type of device that is?
I guess I could take a stab at that, Commissioner, that depends. There's different treatments that are available. Sandal separators are possible, catch basin inserts that have filters that treat the water before it even gets into the storm drain are also possible. Biological treatments in the ponds are also possible and all meet within our criteria. So those are three specific examples that could be proposed to improve the water quality discharging from the site.
And what type of device would the county recommend for this particular parcel?
Well, we don't have a specific recommendation that applicants are allowed to select a variety of them, and it's up to them. of them, and it's up to us to basically just review them first. You know, if you're just asking in general, usually a mechanical pretreatment and a biological treatment work pretty well, as if, you know, you've got some capture of the first flush and then some treatment in the pond that would, looks like they have set up already, would occur. So that seems like that would be adequate for this project.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Nick. Other members of the Planning Commission with questions for staff or the applicant? Mark, please go ahead.
Can you bring up the map again, where it shows the detention pond and the easement for the road getting into the subject property? Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but where the detention pond is, that's agricultural property. And did we have a zone change in order to make that industrial, to accept the detention pond there? And then the same question I have is, where they're putting the road now is agricultural property, and did we do a zone change to industrial to incorporate that into the project?
Thank you for your question. Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning for the Record. You are correct, detention pond as proposed, and Milky Way Road as proposed as access, that is on A19 property, so that's zone agricultural, 19 acres minimum. However, no change of zoning was needed in order to provide access and the pond as an auxiliary facility and improvement that are needed for the project itself. And again, as I mentioned earlier, what we are reviewing as a tentative subdivision map is the division of land in 35 industrial lots, and those 35 lots are all contained within the light industrial parcels. But you're correct in saying that the detention pond and Milky Way Road are, lie outside the boundary of the two APNs that are, that make the bulk of the project, if that answers your question.
So as a follow-up, so if they, if we approve this, and they now have 35 lots, do, at that time, do they have to ask for a zone change on that little piece of agricultural land to have the 35 lots approved at that time? Or if we approve this now, they've gone ahead and taken, you know, a small portion of agricultural land and converted it to industrial use?
Thank you. Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning for the Record. No rezoning application is being proposed, or we did not have a conversation with the applicant about that, and that will not be required. So I would defer to the applicant if they have any reasons why the proposal and the layout makes use of A19 zoning parcel to the north instead of providing everything on site.
Keith, did you want to add anything to what Lorenzo said? I think if I can just summarize, basically what you're saying, Lorenzo, is on A19 land, you can't have a detention spot or pond or a service roadway. It doesn't have to be connected or converted into the industrial land, right? There's no, nothing in code that prevents detention spawns from, on agriculture land or service roads on agriculture land serving another parcel that would be in light industrial. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but am I trying to get that correct? And then Keith, certainly go ahead and weigh in on Zoom if you want to add anything else. But Lorenzo, did I kind of mess it, mash it up a little bit, or was that close to, close to English?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chair. And if I can, again, attempt to interpret, having done the review of this project, Keith Rubin did mention earlier that the location of Milky Way was also affected by the fact that they wanted to line up with another road on the other side of Hayborn. And the location of the detention pond at the very end, at that cul-de-sac for Milky Way Road, might be a suitable location also because of that. But again, I would defer to the applicant to further explain the locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Jeremy, did you want to jump in, or Keith Rubin add any additional comments? And then I, I'm sorry, Mark, for barging in, we'll go back to you then for anything else that you have. Jeremy or Keith?
No, I think Lorenzo and you, Chairman summarized it. I don't think they're, I think they're allowed to put a road in detention, detention pond on the Ag19 mark. And Keith can add to that.
No, I agree. I don't think there's a zoning restriction that says you can't put a road there to service the site, but you could put a road to service any site on any land. In fact, the zoning for roads, roads are agnostic with zoning. Most of them have no zoning on them whatsoever as a result. And again, I think I explained why we located the access where we did. And Milky Way Road is basically where it is today, except we had to just shift it a little bit to the north in order to line up with existing access to the corporate yard across the street from Douglas County. So that's, that's, detention ponds usually go to the low spot, and I'm assuming that's why the engineers decided to put it at that location. I'd have to defer, honestly, to our engineers, but I believe that is why it's that location it is.
Thank you, Keith. Mark, I'm sorry, did you have other questions, or do you want to follow up on this point?
Sure, I'll follow up with Keith. So I have no problem with, yes, we need to line up the roads, and Milky Way Road has to move. But why can't, why can't the detention pond stay on the industrial property on the lot that's closest to the current location?
I have to defer to Rob Anderson, who I believe is on the call, if he can hear this and just paying attention. But I don't know, I'm going to have to get back to you. I don't know the answer.
Okay.
Now, I am, Mr. Chairman, this is Rob Anderson. I am on the line, and despite appearances, I am paying attention, Mr. Rubin.
You aren't on the, right up to your face, Rob, so I don't know.
Well, I've got to talk to our IT company about that. The, so Mr. Denry, the reason that the detention basin is located where it is, in addition to it being servicile by gravity, it's also a property value question. Clearly, for the applicant, as noted before, there's no prohibition in the county code for locating these facilities on ag property, and it's an appropriate land use in that respect. In addition, it leaves more of it land available to essentially develop for industrial purposes, you know, consistent with the zoning and master plan designations that have been approved by this board or prior boards in your capacity, which is a benefit not only to the landowner but the community as a whole. So that is why it was removed outside the subdivision and located just slightly north on the ag lands.
Thank you, Rob.
Of course.
Thank you, Mark. Other members of the Planning Commission for questions or comments of staff or the applicant?
Just to follow up on that, I would like to have Planning provide the NRS section that says that a retention pond for an industrial park can be located on ag land. I sense a little fuzziness on this question.
Sure, we'll try and see if we can get that. Perhaps Sam Booth or Tom Delair can do a little nosing around and come up with something that's definitive there. In the meantime, we'll continue on. If you're not having other questions, Nick, I think Maureen wants to ask questions. Nick, could you turn your microphone off then, please? Thank you. Maureen, we'll turn to you for questions or comments.
I have a question. I don't know if it's best that Keith Rubin answer it or staff. There was the comment made that Milky Way needs to move in order to line up with the existing road for the corporate yard, and yet they are shifting Earnhardt Road to ag land because they haven't successfully concluded negotiations with the owner of the strip of property that fronts on Airport Road. Even though it makes more sense for circulation to have the access road into the business park line up with Meridian. And it just feels like they're putting the cart before the horse on that, because we have no, nothing other than their word that they have been talking with the owner of that strip. And we have, nothing that says, an appraisal has been done, nothing that says that the person is absolutely dead set against selling that property, that little easement for the culvert to go in in order to access the industrial park. It makes more sense to have a cross intersection there as opposed to running asphalt across Earnhardt Road. It is simpler because they own that property, but why is it okay to shift Milky Way to line up to an existing road? But we have to accept their word that lining up with Meridian doesn't work. I, I don't understand that. I'm not happy with that. I don't think it's sound planning. And while the applicant has their reasons, it's our jurisdiction to do planning for roads that will last for decades. And I don't know, somebody needs to explain that to me, why we should grant them access onto Earnhardt and not insist that they conclude their negotiations and provide us proof that those negotiations have either succeeded or failed to have the engineering done for Meridian.
Thank you, Maureen. Keith or Rob Anderson, do you want to take a crack at responding to Maureen's concerns?
I was going to see if Rob was going to jump in.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm in. Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman had it on mute. Maureen, the issue is, we would be, and we have talked with Mr. Delair and Mr. Hutchings about aligning those two intersections, the Meridian Business Park with the proposed entrance into this subdivision. Unfortunately, it's private property that is owned there, that strip of land, and it's the party, and, you know, you'll just have to take my word for it, that Mr. McKinney on behalf of Bentley has been attempting and been discussing those items with that landowner, and to date has not come through with a fiscal arrangement that makes sense to both parties. Obviously, based on the mapping, that Bentley owns the property to the west, and that's an available access point. And short of the county being willing to condemn the property, so presumably the Planning Commission could require us to align those two intersections, and to the extent that we are unsuccessful in achieving a, an agreeable price for that right to cross the private land, the only way we could then comply with it is if eminent domain was exercised by the county, and that would be something that would be separate and apart and something that the county would be responsible, at least in my understanding. Effectively, it would not be good planning either to allow a single property owner of a very sliver, small sliver of property, perhaps even some would call a spite strip, from preventing a landowner with zoning from being able to exercise their rights on their property. So that's kind of the, how we got to the point of having the access of Earnhardt Way being west of, or west shown on the mapping, I guess is best, and then, or is the best way to describe it, then, and, you know, to their good credit, I think Bentley has used all reasonable diligence with the support and help of Mr. Delair to encourage the landowner to cooperate so we could get a better location. But to the point that the landowner does not want to cooperate or is unwilling to, honestly, as private citizens, we have no ability to compel them to do so. The public does, but a private citizen does not. And so that's how we ended up with what we are, or what's been presented to date.
There is no public interest in using eminent domain for this. It's not a park. It's not a public road. It's a private road, basically, going into a private subdivision. So that's off the table, and that would never be on the table. It's my understanding, because of the size of the project, that's why two access points are required for this. If the project was half the size, then the one entrance off of Milky Way would be adequate. As you said, we have only your word for how negotiations are going with this property owner. We have no idea whether an appraisal has been done on the property, the spite strip, so to speak, which is a historic term. We have nothing in our packets, and I just feel that it's premature for us to be approving a project that is incomplete. And I don't know, I just think it's, we're moving too quickly on this, and I don't doubt that Mr. Bentley and Bentley Enterprises has been doing a lot of work. I think Matt is a man of honor. But I, I still think that we need more information with regards to why Meridian cannot be lined up with the business park, because that is the better planning option. And I don't want to take anybody's word that this is the only option by going into ag land to build a street. I think it's the easier option, but I don't think it's the best option for the county on the whole.
Thank you, Maureen. Keith or Rob, did you want to respond to anything else Maureen commented on, or should we move to other questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
This is Rob Anderson. No, I believe Ms. Casey's made herself perfectly clear.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission? Brian?
So sticking to the drainage, the road, and I mean, not to keep beating the same horse, but, you know, when we look at this, you know, from, let's say that three properties owned by three different property owners, do you get to put a drainage on the property next to you? Pretty much the answer is probably no. You know, when you look at self-dealing, in the instance of what we have here, is essentially you're dealing with yourself. You're increasing the value of one parcel by diminishing the value of another parcel. Now, these are two, three separate parcels, and in the future, let's say, you know, maybe Bentley doesn't own all three. You know, we've essentially decreased the value, and some new owner has to walk in with easement on their property. So has a lotline adjustment or anything been considered to just include these in the properties altogether, looking at the size of the properties around there, so that this could all be on this, you know, subject site, as opposed to located within three different sites? Because I think the locating of this project across three different parcels is just not correct. I mean, you know, I understand the alignment of the road, but why not adjust the lot to match it? Why not adjust the lot to include the detention basin and the other Earnhardt Road? Has that been considered, Keith and Rob?
Well, I can answer part of that. So to do what you're talking about, because these properties that are adjacent to Zone A19, any lotland adjustment would have to conform to the underlying zoning. So the smallest parcel adjustment we could make would be 19 acres into those adjacent areas. The other option would be to apply for a zoning map amendment to public facilities for those streets and for the drainage detention pond. That would be alternative, too. We have not considered doing that. It's, again, these facilities are allowed to exist with the benefit of an easement. All the owners and future owners would be put on notice, the title reports, if those easements exist, and it's legitimate use of that property under the zoning laws of Douglas County.
So do we have enough property there next to it to make the adjustment and still stay within the A19? I can't see, because I don't see numbers on the adjacent properties.
Yes, those properties are large enough to make an adjustment, so we would just grow into basically a 19-acre lot to the, to the west and to the north, if we were to do a lotline adjustment.
So saying that we could do it, would it be something worth considering? Because I still think across three parcels, and I mean, self-dealing and diminishing value for a future owner is not something I, you know, intend to want to do, though I know that, you know, the person who owns the property is now assumed would own it in the future, but I don't want to say that they do.
I guess I'm not quite following, Mr. Owen, what the plan to that would be, what you're gaining by creating 19, an additional 19 acre lot now to the west and an additional 19 acre lot to the north. They would both, both the 19 acre parcels would still be, have those facilities on them. It's not changing zoning or really even the location, so I'm not sure what, what it accomplishes.
I think the idea is to include this all under, you know, essentially these, these parcels, not those other two parcels. So there's no other way Sam, Tom, somebody with a brain here that can figure out how to include this on, you know, the subject site, not on three sites?
So, Mr. Owen, this is Rob Anderson. I don't know if I qualify as someone with a brain, but I would say to you that clearly you would have to do a master plan amendment or zone change to make those facilities, you know, the, the road, which is Earhart Way and that detention basin, to make them public facilities or industrial, to have them be incorporated in the subdivision. That exercises, you know, planning exercise, if it was approved by this board and the county commissioners to create additional industrial space, then there would be consistent zoning between the, the number of parcels that you've identified there. There's the two main, and then we obviously were affecting two others by these, what I would consider maybe to be offsite facilities. However, that, that planning exercise is, does not really, it seems to me it's more of a, oh, a zoning manipulation really to accommodate the same, the same purpose. Bentley does own the properties, they are the adjoining owners, that fact is clear. They have obviously agreed to the application and to the use of those part, or those portions of those properties for these purposes. And, you know, I guess we could manipulate the zoning if, you know, we had the assurance from this Planning Commission that you would agree to grant additional industrial zoning, industrial master plan. But otherwise, it's, it's largely irrelevant to the ultimate use of the, the project site, you know, in all due respect.
Well, I mean, and actually of many of the amendments that I've heard, you know, it'd be one that I would like to hear, but as far as granting assurance, I don't think we're allowed to do that. But you did make one comment within the, you know, response that, you know, I didn't like, and it's to improve profits upon the property in which he's going to be converting. You know, I understand, you know, again, it's just, it goes back to the self-dealing aspect of, you know, I have both so I can do this, but screw the person who comes in after me. You know, when I'm looking at a lot of developments that we have seen before us that come here with, you know, master plan amendment, zoning amendment, then the development, this one seems to be skipping the first two steps. And I don't necessarily agree with skipping steps, you know, because we can do it, because we own everything. You know, it's not something that everybody enjoys and to say that I have the power, I can do, I don't think that's something here that anybody likes and has sit well with them. So I think that's all I have on that.
Mr. Owen, this is Rob again, Rob Anderson. I apologize that you took my comment perhaps out of context. I, I didn't mean necessarily for Bentley, but I meant for the, and I think my comment was for the community as a whole, to the extent that you have more land area that could be developed for a higher value than perhaps the agricultural use that's there and the taxes that are paid there, that is my intent. Not that Bentley themselves would generate more, more revenue, which they probably will, I think reasonable you, in your profession and my, or myself in mind, would recognize that, but also the county receives an uptick in the taxes. And I think my comment, my remarks earlier reflected that, that it would be to the community's interest as well. The, so I apologize that maybe I was misunderstood or maybe I mischaracterized things for you, but in, I don't see it as self-dealing, I see it as being pragmatic about the use of the land. And as Keith and Lorenzo have pointed out, there have been, you know, numerous instances where we have constructed roads across ag land for variety of purposes for, you know, a specific example might be Mueller Parkway and the discussions that have occurred with that alignment through, you know, ag land to serve other properties, just as one example. And detention ponds, we routinely locate them in areas that are open space or considered to be open space, or create open space around them for that very purpose. So I, I, you know, I apologize, Brian, if I mischaracterized the intent of the applicant. It is clearly to be compliant with the zoning, to minimize the, you know, the need to do additional zoning manipulations, but if that is the preference of the Planning Commission and you condition it as such, I presume we would go through that process. Mr. Chairman, I, if there's other questions about that issue, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Rob. Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to follow up with?
If you know me, Rob, I like less taxes, so.
Thank you, Brian.
I do know that. Yeah, thank you.
Before I go to Bryce, is Sam Booth or Cynthia Gregory, are you prepared to give a little more amplification to the issue we were discussing before about the detention pond and the road on A-19 language and Nick's request to cite a specific portion of code that allows that? Or would you like another couple of minutes to look through things?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. Just been scrolling through Title 20 here and apologize, we've got limited resources in the room here. As to Commissioner Myers' question earlier about the, the NRS provision allowing, you know, the location of these facilities on an ag zoning, it's really not an NRS issue. That's an, it's contained within Title 20 Douglas County Code that we'd look to for that. So I think, just to go backwards and give you some background here, when staff was reviewing the application and having these discussions with the applicant, and we had a pre-application meeting, and then after the, the application submitted, we had projects meetings with them. We, we determined, I think as Keith Rubin had pointed out earlier, right-of-way does not contain zoning, and the dedication of right-of-way basically is void of zoning. And so we didn't believe that the location of Milky Way Road, a portion of which was on the A-19 parcel to the north, was an issue with the zoning district. The same would be said for Earhart Road, which is, the tail end of which is on the A-19 portion to the west. So again, essentially because there is no zoning over right-of-way and they are dedicating this as public access and utility easements as right-of-way. The same thought process was to be said for the offsite dedication number two. And for reference, I'm looking at this on packet page 93. There's an exhibit that the applicant has submitted that shows this. Number two is the public drainage easement that's being dedicated for the detention pond. And so as we viewed this, similar to what Mr. Anderson just said, there are, there are facilities throughout the county that are located on ag land, detention retention ponds, storm drainage access that the county has required or done in county projects and required easements across properties for the conveyance of stormwater runoff. So we looked at it from that same perspective. I can tell you from looking at the use table in Title 20 and the development code, there's a few different definitions that this may fall into for the Planning Commission's consideration. The first of which, and I think, you know, initially, what we, what we're determining is that this is a type of utility service. And utility service is permitted within the A-19 zoning district by right. However, as we've scrolled through that, that, if you look at that definition for utility service, it really is more talking about power lines and water lines and gas lines, and it doesn't specifically talk about detention ponds or storing of water in, in an open pond like that. There is a use that's, that says public or quasi-public uses not listed, and there's a definition in the code for that. That is not allowed in the A-19 zoning district. So I think for the consideration of the Planning Commission is, staff's interpretation, of course, the applicant's interpretation was that this is permitted as a utility service in the A-19, or essentially because they're dedicating this to the county as part of, as part of the public drainage easement, that it's, again, that the zoning doesn't apply. But I think if the Planning Commission was, was looking for a way to, you know, deny the application as submitted, if the Planning Commission determines that, determines that that drainage pond falls into the definition of, you know, a definition that's not listed for a public or quasi-public utility? I don't know if it's utility. I think it's within the utilities definitions of the code, that that is not permitted on A-19 zoning. There's a section of code 20.100.060, which talks about drainage facilities and does talk about adequate storm drainage facilities must be designed, must be dedicated, and right-of-way dedicated along with that, and the adequate facilities to do those. So the applicant is required to do, and to dedicate right-of-way for the drainage facilities. And I guess the, the question that the Planning Commission is discussing is, you know, where is that most appropriate?
Thank you, Sam. Cynthia, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you. Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Just for the record, the Douglas County Code provision that we were looking at was 2654.020, and it was subsection .130. The public, quasi-public utility not listed, that was subsection D. And I'm just doing this so that Keith and, and Rob can specifically know what we were referring to, so if they want to respond. Additionally, there was a subsection K under that same 2654.020.130 that talks about a water reservoir, but it does require a special use permit within an A-19. And so if you, that's the, 2654 is the code that talks about what's permitted, not permitted. And then within that, the definitions for those uses are in 20.660. So you have to look at those two kind of codes together to determine what the use is and then whether or not it's allowed. And so I don't know how Ms. Rubin or Mr. Anderson defined that detention retention pond on that A-19, how they viewed that, or defined that use within our code. So I think that's an appropriate question for them as well.
Thank you, Cynthia. Rob, did you catch all that? I know there's sometimes an audio difficulty between Zoom people and people who are participating live, but Cynthia, Sam has made his explanation based on what his understanding of code is, and then Cynthia's given you a little more specifics on the sections and the applicability. If you wanted to add anything or provide further amplification on what either of those two people said, we'll turn it over to you now.
Keith, can you respond to that as appropriate?
Well, I guess I'd have to take a look at these code sections and discuss them with the client. Can I ask for a 15-minute break?
We're at the mercy of Nick who needs to leave, and I'm not sure we can resolve this in the next five or 10 minutes anyway, Nick. I hate to lose your participation in this issue, but yes, we'd be happy, I think, to take a 15-minute recess if that will help you get a good answer back and help us make a good decision.
I'd like to discuss it with the client and with Rob.
Okay. All right. I think that's a fair request, so let's stand in recess until five minutes to three. And again, Nick, we apologize for not being, be able to include you on the vote, but you've made a good contribution to our discussion. So we'll be in recess until five minutes to three. Thank you.
It's now 2:55 and we will reconvene the meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission. Just to recap, we are on Agenda Item 2. This is packet page 70. This is the Land Division application for tentative subdivision map for 35 industrial parcels in the intersection of Hayburn Road and Airport Road. We have been discussing the application and the detention pond and the zoning. Nick Meyer, Commissioner Meyer, did have to leave for a previously scheduled appointment. Kristi, I just wanted to double check and make sure you're there so we can identify that we have six members, which constitutes a quorum. Could you let us know that you're there and engaged?
Yes, confirmed. Kristi Gendel is here for the record.
Thank you very much, Kristi. And where we left off is the applicant asked for a brief recess to consult about what we had been discussing. And Keith, I will either turn it over to you or Rob Anderson for comments that you'd like to make on what we've been discussing, and then we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission members for further discussion on this issue and then other issues that people want to raise. So, Rob or Keith, are you there? And can you start on your end?
Yes, I think we're both here. After the meeting with Matt McKenna and Bentley, we are in agreement that we will relocate that drainage detention pond on the industrial use zone property.
Thank you, Keith. I guess this is back a question then for staff, either Lorenzo or Sam maybe. If they're doing this, they're altering the tentative subdivision map, can we do this on the fly, so to speak, or would they need to make a new submittal? I'm not sure on what the technical aspects are, if we could start with that, and then I'll open it up to comments on what the applicant has said on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager, for the record. I do believe, in light of Mr. Rubin's comments, that we can add a condition to the application that you have today before you, that the applicant would revise plans to show the off-site detention basin relocated onsite within the light industrial zoning district. As you know, a tentative subdivision map will go forward to the Board of County Commissioners if approved by the Planning Commission, and this condition would be attached to that as it would move forward to the county commissioners.
Thank you, Sam. So, in essence, you would add a condition, whatever letter it is, under Section 8, conditions of approval, which is on packet page 77, and we would add a condition somewhere down the line, either at the start or the end of that or the appropriate place. And then you or Lorenzo or Cynthia could write that out as we discuss something. Lorenzo, you have something already for us?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning, for the record. Yes, we believe that we can add proposed condition A14 within the condition of approval A. So, those would be conditions that must be met prior to the final map submittal. And it would be, again, Plan Division Condition Number A14 that could read, "The applicant must submit revised site plans for review and approval showing the proposed detention pond to be located onsite and within the light industrial zoning district."
Thank you, Lorenzo. Keith, that sounds good on your end as far as what Lorenzo has read. Or do you need to have him read that back again? Just basically, detention ponds will be onsite.
No, that's acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Bryce, you were seeking recognition before, but I wanted to bring it back to any of the members of the Planning Commission to ask questions of staff on what we've just proposed as a new condition, if we want to take it there. And then if that doesn't need to be addressed, Bryce, you're next on the line for comments or questions. Anybody else need to have details on this, or we'll turn to Bryce? Bryce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to come back to what I can come back to every month, and that is that these decisions are, for me, are never about what I like or don't like or what I think is fair or not fair. I think today, we've teetered a little bit on with the issue of private property rights and what an applicant can or can't do with their own property. And I just feel like if this applicant happens to own all three parcels and one particular property that's zoned properly, that there's value added by doing this, and in doing such that the ag land to the north or to the west is diminished, well, that's a choice that that private property owner can make. And I don't think it's up to me to determine that. That being said, I'm a fan of preserving ag land whenever possible. I wish that the road was on the industrial property. But again, I'm not in a position to dictate, as long as it doesn't affect the code or master planning, whether or not the applicant has to put that road on the property. And because of those reasons, and they can do that, and now the detention pond, which I did have concerns about because it was vague, has now been moved, I can support this.
Thank you, Bryce. I just had one brief issue that I wanted to put on the record. Keith, I think you have talked about this with staff, but on packet page 97, which is your submission, Section 1.2, the description of property, about midway down in that paragraph, it says, "The owner is also requesting a zone change that would change the current light industrial zoning to general industrial zoning when approved by the county." Now, I also looked at the tentative map, and this is on page 99, which is a little, the page number's a little small to read, and the map is also a little small to read, but I think I made it out on the right-hand side where you talk about the project summary. And about halfway down again on that section, it says, "Existing zoning LI and proposed zoning is no change." So, I don't think in our materials, there was any reference to changing the zoning. But I just wanted to confirm with you, Keith or Rob, that you are not planning to change the zoning in this proposal, and you're not planning to change the zoning in any existing or any future proposal. Would that be correct?
We're not proposing to change the zoning with this application, and that was an error.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that. That was the only thing that I think needed elaboration on at this point. If there's no other questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission, we'll move forward to public comment. If we have questions, we'll entertain those before we go to public comment. Mark?
Yes. So, Sam, when you were saying that if it's public facilities, there is no zoning underneath it, so there's no zone change required. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Ned and Rip, Sam Booth. Just to clarify, not public facilities, there are quite a few definitions within the code for public facilities, but right-of-way. And so the dedication of right-of-way for the public road is what is void of zoning and definitions for zoning. So, I think there's been some discussion about that public roads can cross any zoning district essentially. But there are many definitions for public facilities, and that's why we pointed out the potential issue with the detention pond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Other questions at this point from the Planning Commission members? If not, we can go to public comment. Colleen, do you have any public comment? I don't believe we will have any public comment here in the meeting room, so we'll open it up to the people who are on the Zoom call, if you've gotten any interest, or if you can ask the people if they'd like to make public comment at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reached out to Jim Slade, and he has not responded to me. So, if he is listening and would like to comment, I would open it up to him now. The other gentleman exited Zoom.
Thank you, Colleen. Jim, we're happy to hear your public comment on this. If you don't have public comment at this point, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for a motion and deliberations. Okay. I think we can come back to the Planning Commission. The motion that staff recommends is on packet page 70, and Lorenzo has that on the screen. I would note that the findings are on packet page 76. There's eight findings. As is usually the case, I remind people that if they do find that they cannot support a project to cite a particular finding, is always helpful for the record and for the Board of County Commissioners when they consider this. We do have the conditions of approval also. They are on, start on packet page 77. I counted them up, and I probably missed one or two, but I think there were about 72 conditions of approval. Two of those have changed, the one that Lorenzo read on A14, and then the one that he highlighted originally, which was on packet page 80, I believe, A3F, which he has modified with language. If people need to call attention to those or ask Lorenzo for further explanation or bring those up on the screen, I'm sure he can do that. But at this point, we can have discussion, or I'll be happy to entertain a motion on the agenda item.
So, no one else is going to do this. I do appreciate, you know, moving the detention bond, pond within the site. You know, preserving ag land, as Bryce mentioned, is one of those things in the master plan that we just went through and said that, you know, we want to make sure that we do, and that achieves this purpose. And so, therefore, to approve Land Division application, I recommend that we approve Land Division application DP 20-0322, a tentative subdivision map to create 35 industrial parcels ranging in size from 1.07 acres to 6.2 acres on a 79-acre parcel tract, based on the ability to make the required findings, presentation, and public comment, subject to the conditions as amended, Condition 14 and the Condition F on page 80, which is 3F, I believe.
Thank you, Brian. Brian has made the motion to approve the application. Is there a second? So moved. Bryce seconds the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, Kristi, I didn't want to cut you off if you had comments or discussion. Anything on your end?
Kristi Gendel for the record. No, everyone has asked and addressed the questions, so I'm good.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote on the approval of the application. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. I don't think it meets finding number three, the public facilities and improvement standards.
Thank you, Maureen. So, in this vote, all commissioners have voted aye. Maureen has voted no, and Nick is absent. So, there would be five votes in favor, one vote against, and one absent. And that would be then the conclusion of Agenda Item 2, and we'll move to Agenda Item 3. I will read this into the record. For possible action, discussion on development application DP 21-0046 for a major variance to the minimum required parking to allow for a proposed commercial development consisting of 292,805 square feet of commercial bakery space and 133,812 square feet of warehouse and distribution space to provide 465 parking spaces where 586 are required. The project site is located on 30.7 acres at 2453 Hayburn Road in the light industrial LI zoning district and the airport community plan area. The applicant is Dave Marson, APN 1320-05-002-016. Lorenzo, you can start your presentation, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning, for the record. The applicant submitted a design review application to develop the site as a commercial bakery, warehouse, and distribution center. And this is going to be reviewed as an administrative item, which is development application DP 210045. Now, prior to being reviewed by staff, the current development proposal requires the approval of this variance that is in front of you today. This is request DP 21-0046. And this is required to be approved by the Planning Commission to allow the provision of a number of off-street parking spaces that is less than the minimum required. Now, this item also went in front of the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee on 4521, and the committee recommended approval of the project, subject to conditions which have been included in your packet page 165 in the evaluation portion. To give a little background on this project, this is the site. You can see it completely enclosed in the red dashed lines. The zoning is light industrial, and the land use underlying is industrial. It's, Hayburn Road is on the west side or left side of the subject property, and you can probably see Bliss Road labeled. It will be actually one of the access points to the site. You're going to see that in the layout. That's on the east side or right side. This is the site layout, provided by the applicant. And you probably can't see with the gray tones, but this project is going to be developed in two phases. Phase 1, which is going to be towards the west portion of the property, and contains Building 1 and a portion of the parking that is required. It will also contain the entirety of the loading spaces that are going to be provided for the entire build-out, and that is actually 25 loading spaces out of the 13 required per code. And that is loading for trucks, that is. Now, one thing I want to clarify is that the amount of spaces that are provided with Phase 1, as you can see in this slide, is 304, and 360 would be required. And I'm making this clarification because in the staff report, there was a reference to 457 provided with this Phase 1, and that is incorrect. Please note that this does not change the nature of the applicant's request, since, as read into the record, this variance is still to provide 465 parking spaces where 586 are required. That is about a 25% deviation from what the code would require, and this is why the variance is a major variance that is coming today in front of you, since 10% is the normal threshold, threshold, under which this could be reviewed as a minor variance for parking. To complete the picture, you can see what Phase 2 looks like on the site plan. There would be, the applicant would be here constructing 161 spaces, and that would bring the total deficit for the site to 121. There are three findings that must be met for variances. In this case, we're going to follow Section 20.606.050B, and these are offered for consideration to the Planning Commission. The detailed description of the findings are page 166 of your packet, but summarized here in bullet point format. You can see the first one would be an exceptional lot condition. And in this case, the site has, is partially in the flood plain, and the applicant has been working at trying to develop in a way and manner that is required by code, and in a way that needs to be improved for the site to actually be usable and with the use that is proposed. So, staff finds that Finding 1, due to topography and hydrography of the project site, can be met. Finding number 2 is about circumstances that are not usually the norm for the particular land use district, in this case, the light industrial. And there's nothing of just light industrial districts in general that, you know, has flood plain as the norm. So, staff finds that that can be met. And lastly, no material damage to neighboring properties is foreseeable with this variance. And looking at the site layout and just knowing how industrial projects tend to be more self-isolated and without spillover for parking problems, staff seems, staff is confident that the applicant can, can, especially observing how Phase 1 parking plan serves the development and the users and the tenants that are going to be in that Building 1, they could provide what is needed for the entire project as a whole. So, staff believes the findings have been met, and the project has been conditioned. You can see the condition on packet page 167 of your packet. This is the recommended motion in front of you. I'll defer to the applicant or open it up to the floor for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lorenzo. Is the applicant on? Or Keith, are you making the presentation at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Plan Commissioners, for the record, through Ruben Arnold Anderson Engineering. I have with me on the line Bob Anderson and also Tyler Wallace. Tyler is representing Marston Foods. I'd like to introduce him first, he can go ahead and make the introduction to their company and tell you a little bit about them.
Thanks, Keith. Also, thank you, all members of the committee, for your time today and your consideration. As Keith said, my name's Tyler Wallace. I'm the owner's rep for Dave Marson and Marson Foods, Marson Real Estate. We're obviously excited to kick this project off, with your blessing, of course. We're looking forward to our expansion and bringing some higher-quality jobs into Douglas County. Part of our approach to our bakery business and the food industry, manufacturing business, we're a heavily automated facility. So, space for capital equipment is crucial to our future growth, and we ideally would like to keep everything on this parcel and on this property and this development as we grow moving forward. So, this is really the main catalyst for why we are requesting this major variance, so that we don't have to reduce size of either of the buildings. So, it's more conducive to our growth moving forward. So, that's where we stand. I know Dave's actually out of the country, or else he would gladly be on this call as well. But we wanted to make sure that you, you know, you were confident in us, and you heard from us how excited we are to be moving into Douglas County.
Thank you very much, Tyler. We'll come back to the members of the Planning Commission for questions of staff and the applicant. Bryce, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a builder, you see this more and more these days, where the parking space requirements for warehouse, manufacturing, and distribution are outdated and due to automation. You just don't need the same amount of parking spaces that you used to need. One question I have from Mr. Mastino is, are there other distribution manufacturing facilities here in Douglas County where we've made this exception and granted this variance in the past, somewhat set a precedence?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your question, Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning, for the record. I am not aware of another distribution facility nearby. We did look at the area where this project is coming in, and I know that the Starbucks facility, roasting plant property is nearby, and that had, doing some background research on that, we did see that a variance was granted for that project as well. And it was a somewhat similar type of request and for the similar reasons. So, it was mentioned automation in that case. We also did look at other industrial use zone properties nearby, such as the Ridian Business Park, for example, which is not very far away, and compared aerials. It's a very empirical way of looking at parking and what's provided and what's needed. But that is one of the tools that we have, looking at aerials through time, through different years, and seeing how many spots are actually being utilized and how many are not. I hope this answered your question.
Thank you, Bryce. Other questions, comments from members of the Planning Commission? Maureen?
I don't know if this is more appropriate for Keith. On packet page 173 of the R.O. Anderson Report, last paragraph, it says, "With the provided parking of 470 spaces and the estimated number of employees per shift to be less than 240, as proposed, there is still an excess of approximately 230 spaces. Is there a chance that they will be coming back to us later on, or is there an opportunity of them to be coming back to us later on to remove more parking spaces? I'm all in favor of keeping as much unpaved surface as possible. And is that something that the Planning Commission would review? Is that something that would be done as a staff level? Is that something that actually can be done at a later time if they see that they're not going to need all those parking spaces?"
Through you, Mr. Chair, Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning, for the record. Thanks for your question, Ms. Vice Chairwoman. The applicant, in order to reduce the amount of parking spaces further, but maintain the same square footage that they're showing in the design review, they would have to come back in front of this board to ask for another variance to be approved. What they could do is reduce square footage, which could reduce the total parking required further. But one thing that I want to point out that might be helpful to see what's the relationship between the variance and the actual design review, is that we do have a condition, and I'm going to go to the condition page, if you could bear with me a second.
Mr. Chair, I think I know where Lorenzo's going. On your packet page 167, Lorenzo has included condition number one, which states that if the variance is approved, it's conditioned on the approval of a major design review by staff.
Thank you, Sam. Yes, that is correct. And what I was trying to get to is that this variance to allow less parking spaces is pretty much bound to the, the design review itself in this case. So different projects would have to need a different type of application be reviewed.
I just wanted to give them the opportunity, should they, going through design review, decide that, wait a minute, we really want to cut it down, say another 50 or 100 parking spaces, that they have the opportunity to do that and granting this variance gives them that opportunity? Or if there's a whole nother process that they have to go through later on down the road?
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions, comments from members of the planning commission?
The only comment I think I would make and, and I think it's very well explained in the, the packet on page 172 is that the last major update to Douglas County Code Parking Standards was in 1996. And then it says that was adopted based on 1966 standards. So parking regulations were based on demand studies between 25 and 50 years old. And obviously it goes on to illustrate the productivity and the less need for people to come into the facility in the, the greater automation. So I think, to me, that's a very good explanation of, of where we stand.
Sam Booth?
Cynthia.
Cynthia, I'm sorry.
Cynthia Gregory, for the record, just for a clarification with regards to member clutches and questions with regards to precedent, each land of, each piece of land is unique. And particularly with special use permits and variances, you have to look at that unique piece of land to determine if the findings are met. I think it's relevant to ask the question, have other variances been granted in terms of evaluating whether or not you need to make a code change? However, when you're evaluating a specific piece of property, that shouldn't factor into your decision-making. With regards to the parking code, I'd just like to clarify that while that particular section hasn't been updated, I will note that there were updates to the parking standards, particularly with regards to loading, and that was done in 2008. So the chapter was looked at and in that instances, there was a series of variance requests regarding loading. And so therefore, that's when it was looked at. So the fact that you probably haven't heard of variance with regards to parking standards in this type of development probably lends itself more to there hasn't been this type of development occurring rather than the parking standards being out of date.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Very good explanation. Other comments from members of the planning commission? Mark?
Yes. So Lorenzo, if these guys obviously have plenty of parking for their particular use, but what happens if this bakery goes out of business and we have the building and it's converted to some other type of use? Can you tell me what maybe Carson's parking standards are or maybe Reno's parking standards for light industrial?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Nedden Rip, Lorenzo Mastino, Douglas County Planning for the Record. I do not know what the parking requirements for Carson City are or other neighboring counties. I, I believe that the, the standard that we have, which you can read in packet page 164, which is one space per thousand square feet for the commercial bakery, which equals the one space per 1,000 square feet for warehouse and distribution space. And I make that point just to, to note that a couple of these uses are interchangeable in terms of, in terms of off-site parking requirements, onsite parking requirements, sorry. But so I believe that this type of square footage per space is quite standard. But then there's a lot of variety in terms of, you know, the standards are more or less vexing on the, on property owners depending on, on what city or county zoning ordinance Am I, was that helpful or is there something else that you would like to ask at this point on this? Sorry.
No, not for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Maybe, maybe Mr. Wallace or Mr. Rubin. Mr. Wallace, you have a facility in Sparks and you may have looked at other locations in Carson City or in other counties. Either of you have a response to, to Mark's question on the parking?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Rubin. I, I do have a response. So in the packet on page 172, you'll see a breakdown of the parking requirements. And what we did is we compared it to ITE recommendations. ITE is Institute of Traffic Engineers. They, they regularly publish a parking generation manual that many communities across the country follow. And this is based on, ITE does ongoing call for papers and, and studies to keep their standards updated routinely. So they're looking across the country and even like pointing out, even in ITE though, there's always a lag with technology. And because, you know, all the studies in the world don't keep up with the pace that people are doing now with advanced manufacturing and robotics and things like that. But when we look at the most recent ITE parking generation, that's where we come up with, if you look at it in terms of number of spaces based on number of employees or you look at it based on the gross floor area, both of those are substantially less than the county Certainly by, based on employee count, but even looking at the gross floor area, it's, it's less, but not so much less than even what we're going to build, which is, I believe it's 400 and the score 74 is what we're proposing. And the ITE based on gross floor area would be 404. So that's, we did, it's not like we pulled the number out of the hat. We did, we did look at the, at the recommendations based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers' Parking Generation Manual as a benchmark.
Thank you very much, Keith. Mr. Wallace, did you have any other comments that you wanted to add to this, this question?
No, that's, that's good on my end.
Okay.
What Keith said.
Great. Thank you very much. Other questions from members of the planning commission or should we move to public comment at this point?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sam.
Thank you, Sam Booth for the record. I just wanted to clarify, maybe just part of Mr. Nedden Rip's question was about potentially a change in use or a change in businesses on the site. And within code, it's described that if, if there's a tenant change to the building or a use change to the building that requires additional parking or potentially requires additional parking, that a minor design review is required. And that's an administrative process that staff would handle that minor design review. But in doing so, we would analyze the parking requirements for that proposed use. We don't see it too often on, on large industrial buildings like this where you, we see it more often is in a, you know, strip mall, commercial center where one tenant moves out and a new tenant moves in. You can imagine it, you know, difference in types of retail uses that one, one may require much more parking than another and staff analyzes that. So if Marson Foods were to move out of the building and a new use were to move in, based on what that new use may be, staff would have a minor design review application and analyze the parking. And there, you know, I think as Lorenzo pointed out, there's additional land on the site that more parking could be provided in the future. But the applicants were requesting, you know, to disturb less of the site at this point because they didn't believe the parking was needed.
Thank you very much, Sam. Anything else from the planning commission? Colleen, do we have individuals on the Zoom call that you think might want to offer public comment on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Yes, Jim Slade would like to comment.
Okay. He can go ahead and then if there's anybody else, they can follow Jim.
Yes, Jim Slade, S.L.A.D.E. I would ask Mr. Mastino or someone else in the planning commission if they can put up page 163 from the packet while I speak. As we know from the master plan update, maps are incredibly important to all planning matters. That's why the map update was done before the text update. I love maps. Maps can and should be very helpful in understanding the location and surrounding land use and zoning, which would help inform planning commissioners, county commissioners and the public as to whether a request might or might not be reasonable. Unfortunately, I don't see page 163, but I'm sure you can all look it up. When I look at the land use map, at least this map is larger than the one for item one and it has a key, but the key is particularly unhelpful. It shows parcels aerial, whatever that's supposed to mean. It's pretty meaningless to anyone looking at this for the first time. And then it has something referred to as future land use, which I'm not sure why that's relevant. We're interested in current land use. And it shows something that looks like white or very light green in the key, but nothing resembling that color on the map. The dark green apparently is industrial, the brown, who knows? So that's pretty unhelpful as well. And then when we look at the zoning, again, aerial parcels, it shows a light green as A19, although that color does not appear on the map, there's something that looks more olive. It shows, you know, it doesn't show what the brown, the brown, well, it's got a little LI up there that may, but of course that's not in the key, that's just on the thing. And so I find these maps, again, very unhelpful. And I don't know why staff can't make a map and include a key and the applicant as well that would be more helpful to commissioners and to the public. This new style of map that you seem to be using is not helpful at all. And, and the maps used to be much more beneficial. And I don't know why you've made this change, but it's not in the public interest nor in the interest of commissioners. So I would urge whoever's doing these packets, whether it's the applicant and/or staff, that they make maps that are much more informative than what you see before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Colleen, do we have anybody else on the Zoom link for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Jim was it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I would note that Jim does make a very good point. We try and do the best we can on maps. Sometimes color's not perfect, sometimes size is not perfect. We're, we're constricted by, by resources, but we'll do, attempt to do a better job in the future on that. I do think on the master plan industrial map on the top of that page that Jim was referring to, future land use is, I think, just kind of a term of art. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lorenzo or, or Sam Booth. That's kind of what we just say, the master plan is future land use. And in this case, again, Jim, your point is very well taken. We, we try and do the best we can with the maps and the explanations, but we're dealing with the variance, so the maps really don't have a great deal of, of relevance. It's important to look at, but when you look at the specific findings that we, we must meet, one, two, and three on packet page 166, I don't see a whole lot of direct relevance there. But we'll try and do as best we can. And Lorenzo, I'd be happy to yield to you or Sam Booth for other comments if you, if you want to make them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have anything to add. We'll keep improving what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Okay, we'll bring it back to the members of the planning commission for deliberation or other questions or comments that they want to make or a motion. The motion is on packet page 160. And Lorenzo, if you want to pull that up so people who don't have a packet in front of them can, can look at that. And there are no modifications, if I'm correct, Lorenzo, to this motion. It's just as is on the packet. So I'd be happy to look to my colleagues for a motion. Bryce?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve development application DP 21004 and the request for major variance to allow for 465 parking spaces where 586 are otherwise required, based on the ability to make the required findings, presentation, the applicant's variance justification and public comment.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Is there a second?
And as a switch for me, I will second this motion to reduce the parking spaces.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Second's Bryce's motion to approve the major variance. Is there discussion? Brian?
I just wanted to say, you know, I always thought that parking was a problem, that we never had enough of it and, you know, it takes a project like this to kind of show it to you, but I did, you know, compare it when I was looking around town and driving around and we do have a lot of industrial space with a lot of unused parking. So I do appreciate bringing that to our attention because I always thought parking was the opposite problem.
Thank you, Brian. Other comments or discussion from members of the planning commission?
It's only an issue in the neighborhoods.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Christie, anything to add or elaborate on, on your end?
Can I open the record? No, I have no additional comments to add or questions.
Thank you very much. I don't want to leave anybody out when I can't see where we got everybody. If there's no other discussion, then I'll call for a vote on Bryce's motion to approve the major variance. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So in this vote, there's six votes aye and one member, Nick Meyer, absent. So the motion is agreed to. That concludes our agenda. I did want to allow closing public comment. I know it has not been the practice of the planning commission when we were on the Zoom calls or even prior to that, when we were having in-person meetings to allow closing public comment. But I do believe that it is important to have public comment at as many opportunities as we can. So I would like to entertain closing public comment at this point. We do not seem to have any people in the, in the meeting room. So Colleen, I would ask you if there's any individuals on the Zoom call who would like to make closing public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Yes, Jim Slade would like to make closing comment.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, Jim Slade. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to make closing public comment. We have a lot of making up to do for the past year's limited public comment to get back to an average norm. I would like to point that on, out that on page 66 of your packet today, which is part of item number one, that the description of the address of the parcel that the Bentley Corporation wanted to subdivide into large lots is indicated as Centerville Lane. And unless, you know, I don't believe that that parcel, those parcels are anywhere near Centerville Lane. And unless I missed it, nobody pointed out the mistake there, so I find that disappointing. And to get back to the maps on that same item, I know you defended them, Mr. Wall, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, I'm looking at it, I have very good vision since my cataract surgery. I have excellent reading vision and I'm looking at it at 100% magnification. So just as I would see it, so I picked it up at the, at the planning commission, at the planning office there. And those tiny little maps are nothing we've ever seen before. I cannot read a single letter or number on them. You said something says RA5 and whatever, but I can't read any of that and I have very good vision. So it can't be a question of resources. So it can't be a question of resources when, you know, we have thousand-page agendas from time to time. Certainly maps should be big enough so that people can read them without magnifying glasses. So I would encourage staff to make the maps, whether they consider them the most relevant issue to a particular proposal or request before the commission, to make them large enough so that people can read them and understand them without undue difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Colleen, anybody else on the call?
Thanks again, Chairman Walder. No, that is it.
Thank you very much, Colleen. Any closing comments from members of the planning commission? I do want to thank the staff for their hard work on these agenda items. Want to thank the members of the planning commission for their good participation. We appreciate Nick sticking with us for as long as he can. And Christie, we appreciate your taking time to participate on the Zoom call. Thank the members of the public who also participated. We hope to get back to even more in-person participation from staff and the public, but we'll follow the state and the county's edicts on that as we move forward. So unless there's other comments from members of the planning commission, I will call the meeting adjourned at 3:45. Thank you very much.